Mr. Braminski? Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Howe? She is here. Mr. Kelleher?
Here.
Mr. Curry?
Here.
Seven?
Here.
Mr. Schneek?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vogt?
Here.
Ms. Wacus?
Present.
Mr. McGinnis? Present.
Ten of eleven.
Dishes, deletions to the work agenda. Ms. Wacus?
Yes, I'd like to add a discussion concerning Luzern -- the gypsy moth infestation in Luzern County.
Okay. We'll make that number seven. That's all right?
Yep.
Mr. Chair, if I could add a couple items as well?
Yeah, Mr. Haas?
Could I add number eight, a discussion of homesteading $5 back to the people in the wake of the fee?
That will be number eight, and the current number seven will be nine and 10 then.
Could I also add one more? Authorization of $400 for C cap registration at that time of year again. We're looking at the annual conference.
Registration for the conference?
For the conference, for the annual conference.
C cap?
In August, C cap conference, that's correct.
And when is that? Do you have an idea?
It's in Gettysburg this year, August 5th through the eighth.
When is the registration due?
Registration is, the early bird is due by June 30th.
Okay.
That's $400 as opposed to $425.
Per conference attendee?
For annual conference. Yep.
Okay, that'll become number nine. Reports with council committees will be 10, and then reports with council-related committees will be 11.
Okay.
Mr. Swets?
In your packet is the monthly budget reports. I have them with me in case there are any questions. I believe it was page two, to page nine in the agenda, and then actually the bank balances are after that. I will talk about the summary page, and then if there's any questions on any of that individual detail. As in previous meetings, if I have an answer now, I will let you know, or otherwise I'll get back to the group. If you go to page 13, which is the summary page, you can see we're in pretty much the same boat as we were last month. If you look at line one, the taxes line, the taxes line, as you recall, Hazel Township bills did go out, but we're still not collecting to the percentage that we have in prior years. I'm not concerned about that. Again, it's going to be a timing issue. We'll watch it because it's obviously material dollar mail, but that's most of your difference in the taxes line. You have the prior year, year-to-date is the last column there. On the expenses, we have some more encumbered things. In the past, really, it was only stuff for corrections that were encumbered. Now you'll see some things for non-personnel costs. You'll see almost $1.8 million encumbered. When you look at the percentages in total, the revenue is 52 percent. If you go back to the budget hearings and even after that, usually of the tax line, we get up to around, by the end of discount, normally around 75 percent. That'll be pushed back a little bit because of the late billing, but you can tell we're already at 58 percent of taxes. So overall, we're on budget, on par. Obviously, as we get later in the year, we'll have more discussion and more detailed reports, and the mid-year report is obviously a huge report, but this is the general fund summary report. And then, as I said, any questions on this or the individual reports that I can answer, I'll gladly do now, or get back to the group.
Questions for Mr. Swets?
Just your budget report. On the statement of accounts?
Mm-hmm.
You've got an Act 13 account in there, correct?
Correct.
That shows $2.7 million in it, correct? For road and bridges.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and none of that's been expended since it came into the county, correct?
I believe that's one of the funds that they've been accumulating money in. There hasn't been much expended recently, if at all. You're correct on that.
I just wanted to point that out because during last week, two weeks ago, budget discussion, we brought up the fact, I think I said 2.4, but it was actually 2.7 that's in there.
Yep.
So we haven't done anything for four or five years with money that came in through road and bridges. And I looked at this capital plan. I don't see anything in the capital plan that says that that money's going to be used even.
I don't believe there's anything in the capital plan either. I think you're correct on both, Council.
Right, right.
What's in there? It's on the last page.
Last page as of?
The last page of the capital plan.
There's the Salma Street Bridge in there, but that's a on hold.
The last page of the capital plan clearly lists where we're going to be utilizing the Act 13 funds for our sale. We have a list of road and bridge projects.
Yeah, but it would be highlighted in yellow.
It's not highlighted in yellow. Nothing's highlighted in yellow. That's why I looked at this.
We're going to use that this year. I have that project. I'll let Council know.
Well, it should be in this capital budget then, like Ms. Howe was asking for beginning of the meeting.
That's already been allocated, if I recall correctly, from the previous budget, if I recall, because that's already been done. Eddie, I'll, we'll have to respond to Council on that. Where the Act 13, our sale of shale funds, you guys put the bridges.
Yes, it says yellow, and there's nothing highlighted in yellow.
Right.
The only thing you have highlighted in yellow, you've got something at the airport which has to do with fuel tanks, and that's can't be used. You've got the masonry project over at the airport, you've got fleet vehicles. There's the only thing highlighted in yellow, and there's nothing highlighted in yellow throughout this project that shows that that money's going to be used.
I gave my capital budget to the media, so I'll be happy to let Council know.
Nothing on the last page.
Nothing.
There's green there, and there's other funds, but not that fund.
Anyone else?
Yes. A quick question for Mr. Swets. Mr. Swets, in close to, well, it looks like this is through April, so the first quarter. Any unexpected savings that you see anywhere in these line items? I mean, I'm looking at percentages here, but anything that sticks out to you?
Not at this point.
Pleasant surprises?
No, not really at this point. Again, we do look at these reports on a monthly basis, but as we get to the quarterly basis and get that information, nothing or chattering that, hey, we are only using, you know, 20 percent of what we thought we would have used over this time. Again, the revenue, we're obviously watching because it's a revenue item versus an expense item, but no, not on the.
See, we have requests for $100,000 coming up. Just want to know, maybe you found somewhere we could offset that anticipation of that. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Sure.
Greenwald? Number two, we have a request here from the Public Defender's Office in regards to amendment to the budget for a transfer from the reserve fund.
Thank you. If the Council will recall, and for those new members, we had a discussion at budget time about the possibility of a death penalty case coming around. A death penalty case has come around. Public Defender's Office is representing, actually, there's two death penalty cases pending right now. The Public Defender's Office is representing a Mr. Marchetti. I'd like to request or follow up on the written request that I made to Council to transfer money from the contingency fund to a line item in my budget examination and expert witnesses.
And what did you pay as far as the expenses?
Well, one of the things that I think I can probably do, I know that the written submission requested $100,000 to be transferred. I could probably reduce that to about $80,000. Between the time I submitted the submittal or the request in writing, and today I had an opportunity to speak with the person who's probably going to be the defense mitigation expert, and the estimate of her particular price, her cost is a little bit less than what I anticipated. So I think I could probably feel comfortable reducing the request to $80,000.
Since we have the capital case that we know is going to proceed at this point, right, what kind of cost are we looking at overall for that? Do you have any idea as far as?
Well.
And when do you think of the reaching a point where you'd be going to trial?
I can't really anticipate when it's going to go to trial.
You think it'll be this year?
I do not think it'll be this year, but I think the, I mean, I think it would be very unusual if it went to trial this year.
Okay.
I think that the bulk of the mitigation work would take place this year, and I think that there are a number of other experts that may be needed in doing some research to prepare for tonight's presentation. And I just listed possible experts that might play into this. In addition to a mitigation expert would be a physician, a psychiatrist, a toxicologist, a jury selection specialist, a pathologist, computer forensics, neuropsychologists, ballistics, fingerprints, criminologists. Those are 10. If you take each one of those and average them out, it's as little as $5,000 apiece. I think that number, what I'm looking for, the $80,000 transfer is justified by the mitigation specialist and, you know, let's say we hire half of those other experts.
Questions for Mr. Greenwald?
If this wasn't a death penalty case, would you be coming in, you're asking for this money?
No.
No. When's the last time somebody's been executed in this state?
I couldn't answer that, Mr. Urban. I don't remember.
I don't remember either. And we have a governor now that says he's not going to sign any death warrants, correct?
That's correct.
Why does it, why is the DA continue to push for death penalties when they know that person is probably not going to ever be executed? That there's going to be appeals, that it's going to cost the taxpayers millions and millions of dollars, like they did with the Banks case? You know, I just don't understand the mentality of the district attorney, knowing that the governor and probably future governors are not going to sign death warrants, why they even pursue the death penalty when they, there's all these expenses associated with it.
So I'm assuming you're not asking me a direct question? That's a question better made to the district attorney.
Questions for Mr. Greenwald?
Question, Mr. Greenwald?
I love the discussions, and you and I can, I think we'd agree, we would love to have these discussions, but it's not the place or time.
If I could, Mr. Haas? What's the expected timeline, Mr. Greenwald?
I have no idea.
Within the next several months or so?
I'm not sure I understand what your question is.
I'm just saying, if these experts come in and they perform their service, then is it standard practice for your office to pay them, like a 30-day window? How do they get paid for their services?
So there's no such thing as a standard practice because this is the first, as a public defender that, excuse me, I'm sorry, this is the first death penalty case that I've encountered in this position. But I do know that people are entitled to be paid for their work, and people like to get paid for their work, so I intend to pay them.
I fully intend to do that.
Right.
I'm just wondering if this would take place during this budget year or not, because I know when Mr. Greenwald came last budget cycle, and also the district attorney, you know, always we really, we looked at every line item very surgically, and I know we encouraged you and other department heads to come, division heads to come and ask Council if you need more funds, and you're doing so, very appropriately so. And I'd be willing to support this because we certainly made some cuts on your line items too, and you're the professional. I think if you need this and going forward, I'd totally be willing to support this.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question for the manager or for Mr. Swets. How much is in the reserve fund?
Mr. Swets, I think it's 4.5?
I did ask the last time we had a budget report to see the budget breakdown at the division level. I could have answered that question without asking, you know, but the budget breakdown is still the Rick Williams version, one-page version. So is there any chance that we could see it at the division level?
Sure.
Sure. Okay. I think that's what you said last month too, but thank you. So we have the money in the reserve fund.
Anyone else for Mr. Greenwald? Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three, this is a discussion going ongoing. We've had a couple people come to us in regards to the Water Street Bridge and the lighting. Mr. O'Neill, you want to speak to this, or Mr. Pedri?
I defer to Mr. O'Neill on this one. He's been, Mr. O'Neill's spent a large amount of hours going out to the Water Street Bridge to take a look at this lighting. I don't want to steal his thunder at this point.
It's one of my favorite spots.
This resolution is simply an acceptance by a county council to allow PP&amp;L to move
forward with replacing the lights with LED heads. It would basically be an upgrade to convert them from, right now they are a high-pressure sodium lamp. When we were out there and during the discussions that took place over the last few meetings, one of the things that they found recently was that there was a problem. There's two circuits that run all nine lights on the bridge. It just so happens that the ones that are out are on one of the circuits. Every other light is on the same circuit. I'm not sure what the design philosophy is behind that, but there are three lights currently out of nine that are out, and they have already replaced all the heads. They did that back in February. And then it was after that I checked on them and noticed that they were out again, and of course received a follow-up reminder from Mr. McCabe at a couple of our meetings here. So I went back out to the site, I contacted PP&amp;L. They said that they, they said that they had tested the lights when they put them in, because I asked a question, if you replace the heads, do you not test them to make sure that they're on? They claimed that they did. Don't really have an answer as to why three are still out, but the short end of it is that they apparently were waiting on a decision from the county or, based on a conversation we had, to convert them over to LED fixtures. Now, I clearly did not ask them to hold up on making repairs to the circuit before giving them that okay, because there was some research we had to do. So I did do the research. We went online, and there are pages online where you can enter your account, and it will give you figures and estimates if you want to do an LED upgrade. Sometimes there are costs, sometimes there are not. I think it depends on how recently the light, the lights have been put in, the age, but it just so happens that to upgrade those lights on that particular account are at no cost to the county as an upfront cost, and they even provide to you an estimated savings based on your utilization and the nine fixtures, as it is in this case, that are on that account. And that monthly savings, as I indicated in the agenda submittal, I believe is $17.59. So it's not so much that we're saving a lot of money, we're getting an improved form of lighting with less maintenance, and they have recently indicated that they were hoping we would go forward with this before they went out and tried to fix the circuits, because regardless, they're going to have to shut down the bridge for a period of time. It may be a couple of hours, it may even extend up to two business days, depending upon what they run into. So at this point, I have this resolution and brought this resolution to Mr. Pedri and asked him to provide it to Council in order to allow us to move forward with authorizing PP&amp;L and essentially entering in a contract, authorizing them to proceed with the upgrade, at which time they will also do the repairs to the circuits, being that they don't want to have to make two trips and have two different periods of shutdown.
Questions for Mr. O'Neill?
Well, it makes sense. Do you have LED lights on the Cross Valley, because the county has to pay for that too?
I'd have to check on.
Something to look into too, if there's savings out at Pittston, maybe you could have savings at Cross Valley if you don't have LED lights.
Correct. I don't know for sure. I'd have to check on that, but it's certainly something we can look into.
Do you have the Nantico Bridge?
Yeah, certainly this is one of our smaller accounts, but while we're making repairs, being that it's no cost to the county, it makes perfect sense to move forward with.
Any other questions, Mr. O'Neill?
I have a question. Do they, you may have mentioned this, but I missed it. If you did, do they have a timeline as far as when they will begin this project?
Based on, I've had several conversations with them about these repairs since going back as early as December of 2017. So based on my experiences thus far, if we provide them with a signed resolution, I would think there's going to be a short period of time. They may have to procure the fixtures, make sure they have the items necessary to make the repairs. I would like to think, and I haven't gotten a confirmation from them, I will look into it, but I would think that we could have this done within a month's time.
That would be wonderful, because as you know, we've had requests to do something about the lights on the bridge.
Yes, absolutely, and I have been working on it. Again, I've been out there several times myself at night, counting fixtures and trying to determine which ones were out, if they were the same ones that were out when this complaint initially came to my attention. So we have certainly given this attention, you know, I feel.
Thank you.
Appropriate attention.
Mr. Parstik?
I'll just discuss the highlights of the residual contract. Under Article 4 Information, there was a language change in Section 9 regarding transition to armed security. The county will be going to armed security at all of its locations that are manned for entryway, and we will be doing that effective immediately. The, any current security guard that needs the Act 235 training, it'll be provided, and that will enable the security personnel to be certified and weapons to be, to carry. Under Article 21 Health and Welfare, employees hired after January 1 of 2014 contribute 15 percent of the monthly employee contribution. All employees hired before December 31 of 2013 will contribute 12 percent of the employee contribution effective January 1, 2019. These employees currently have a 10 percent contribution rate. Under Article 22 for Salary and Wages, under Section 1, in 2018, employees will receive a 2 percent increase. In 2019, a 2.75 percent increase. In 2020, 2.5 percent increase. In 2021, a 2.5 percent increase. The starting salary will increase yearly. In 2018, it'll be $250 more. 2019, 300. 2020, $250. And 2021, $350. The contract termination, it's a four-year agreement. And when we move into the 911 memorandum, the starting salary for telecommunications will be $32,000. The telecommunications after three years will be eligible to be certified as a telecommunications specialist with an additional bump in salary of $2,500. And they will also be able to be a certified training officer, which will give them an additional $750 in their base salary. We are looking to have all telecommunications be telecommunications specialists and then have them all certified and to be a training officer, which will help with our ABCO standards for certification and to have uniformed training procedures going forward for all employees. The rest of the articles under the 911 simply deal with a change in procedure or policy. And then we will go to the road and bridge memorandum of agreement. There's a shift differential that will increase from 50 cents an hour to 55 cents an hour, and from 60 cents an hour to 65 cents an hour for the second and third shifts. We will also pay a snowplow premium in the winter months for the road and bridge employees who are working out on the roads. 3 to 11, we'd pay 50 cents an hour additional, and 11 p.m. to 7 a.m. shift would be 60 cents an hour additional. There's a provision in the bargaining unit work that will apply to road and bridge and building and grounds departments. That will simply be any work that's performed by either road and bridge or building and grounds. If it's to be contracted out by the county, it'll be discussed first with management and the residual unit. The memorandum of understanding for the security guards, as I stated before, we will offer training to all the current security guards to be Act 235 certified to meet the qualification levels to carry a weapon. All the other appendices will be changed as far as essential departments and classification salaries.
Questions? Thank you. Number five, Mr. Sharp? This is a resolution regarding the local match for the state operating assistance for the Hazleton Public Transit. Mr. Sharp, are you the director?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'd like to apologize for the confusion of not being here at the last meeting that I was scheduled at, so.
That was my fault.
That's all right. I'm here on behalf of Hazleton Public Transit asking for our local match funds to obtain our operating grant assistance from PennDOT. The amount that we are getting for operating assistance is $2,515,51. Our local match contribution is $163,298. When I was here in past, last year, I know it was brought up about reaching out to Carbon and Schuylkill Counties. Their portion, it's a smaller portion, I have it broken down. Carbon Counties is 8.9 percent of our total revenue miles. Their portion towards our local match would be $14,528. Schuylkill Counties' portion is 1.8 percent, which would be $2,939. Now, I did have numerous letters I did send out to those counties with no luck with any replies, so I went a different route, and I reached out to Senator Yudichik's office, and currently I am working with their office, and they are trying to help also to reach out to Carbon and Schuylkill Counties. So things are progressing slowly, but there is light possibly in the future of getting some assistance from the, at least I know, Carbon. We haven't heard anything yet from Schuylkill at this time. So I am asking for Luzern County support like past years. If we do get funds from Carbon or Schuylkill, I will gladly reimburse the county the funds that Schuylkill and Carbon do give to Hazleton Public Transit. Our ridership in Schuylkill and Carbon County from last year to this time, we've brought in, our percentage has gone up by 10.3 percent. So we're bringing more people from those counties into Luzern County, whether it be for doctors, shopping, or work people. So we are bringing people into the county. Our Wilkes-Barre run from Hazleton up to, or from Hazleton to Wilkes-Barre has increased by 17.5 percent to date. So we're also bringing people from Carbon, Schuylkill, to Hazleton, and then up to Wilkes-Barre, whether it be down to Public Square, the mall, or the casino. So we are bringing people in from other counties into Luzern to spend money.
Questions for Mr. Sharp?
You're trying.
Thank you.
You're trying.
Anyone else for Mr. Sharp?
Now, is that a pat on the back?
That's as good as it gets.
Well, you know, I think there was obviously a very good effort on your part, and it's something that people had requested that you proceed with. Mr. Haas, as he's always looking for legislative help, hopefully this will be one of the issues that maybe the legislative committee can.
We're hoping for that, yes.
Help us move along. So thank you. We have the information that you provided for us, and thank you for that. So we'll be on the next voting session, which will be the second Tuesday in June.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Number six, this is part of the discussion with the Redevelopment Authority dealing with the Applied Property Committee. This is the agreement that was referenced in the amendment to the ordinance. At this point, we'd like the Council to comment on it. Obviously, we have to send it forward to the Redevelopment Authority for their review and approval, but we didn't want to move on that until we knew that the ordinance was in place, the amendment to the ordinance was in place, and then the agreement would follow. So this is the agreement that would be a companion to the ordinance that we looked at this evening. Any questions, any situations? Ms. Wacus is the one who crafted the agreement.
Should we change the word "may" to "shall" on this?
It already says "shall" in the agreement.
Well, on page 33, the third paragraph, third paragraph out here, says "may" compensation.
Okay, the following paragraphs.
Says "shall." So on the third paragraph there, the word "may," the fourth line down.
I'll fix it.
We'll put "shall" in if everybody's.
That's all right.
Fine with that. That would correspond to what was done with the amendment. Any other?
Well, actually, on that, if you.
Well, actually, on that, if you look at that third paragraph...
Third paragraph?
If you put "shall" in there, in here, you're actually requiring them to enter the agreement, to compensate and to enter the agreement. Because what it says is that we amended the ordinance, providing that in lieu of providing administrative and legal services directly to the committee, upon mutual agreement, the Redevelopment Authority shall compensate. Are we requiring them to agree to, or are we still giving them the option of providing the services themselves?
Well, it's upon, we both have to be on the same page. So if we both agree that we're gonna, the county's gonna provide the services, then they're required to pay the money. If we're not...
Okay, so it doesn't require them to contract with us, or to agree with us to do it? They could still do it themselves?
Right, or we could say, you know what, we don't want to do it.
Right, okay.
You have to provide it.
I think that being said, if I may, Mr. Chair, in the fourth paragraph...
Fourth paragraph?
Yes, it says, whereas the county authority desired to enter to agreement for the 2018 fiscal year, and wherein the authority shall compensate the county $15,000, I think it should say up to $15,000, because again, I do not foresee us coming anywhere close to that figure, but that is the, that is the limit.
I personally think we should get the $15,000. We'll keep track of the billing. If there's any surplus at the end of the year, it'll be refunded.
Because the alternative would be, we're keeping track, and then we're billing them, we're waiting for them to scrutinize our bills and say, well, I don't necessarily agree with the bill, and in the meantime, we're providing the services while they're...
Yes, so you rectify at the end of the year.
You get the $15,000 within twenty days.
Of the signing of this agreement. And then we'll, and then this, one of the subsequent paragraphs says, I mean, we'll keep track of Sharon's time, of the solicitor's office's time, if there's mailings that go out, whatever the cost of materials are, and certainly provide the Redevelopment Authority an accounting of all costs, so that it's full disclosure of what's being spent, and draw down against...
Because we're going to do a budget amendment then.
Yes, yes, yep, I understand that, yep, that makes a lot of sense to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does it happen to have any kind of language in here that would require us to incorporate the resolution, or that it's incorporated in here?
I think, did I...
I was looking for, you know, that it was incorporated by reference.
Incorporated by reference. Yeah, I mean, I could, I could add that, that's a problem.
I just think...
Yeah, that's usually standard to put in that.
What Mr. Griffith brought up, you really do need to have that incorporated by reference.
And that's usually in there, it's an oversight.
Anyone else? Well, if everybody's in agreement, with a couple changes that we indicated, Ms. Quakers will work on that and put it together, send it out, so the council gets a look at it, see if there's any other comment, and if there are none, if everybody's satisfied, then we go forward to Redevelopment Authority and ask for their review and approval. Okay? And then it would come back to us for approval after the Redevelopment Authority Act.
I just have a question. Who is their lawyer?
They have Rosen, Jenkins, and Green.
So Rosen represents the Redevelopment Authority?
Yeah, so I think that's why they're saying, hey, if we provide the solicitor services at whatever Rosen's rate is, that's why they're coming to us.
Yes.
Okay? Is that permissible? Everybody fine with that?
Yep.
Well, Ms. Quakers, thank you. I think you provided that. Moving on to the second page, first of all, the gypsy moth discussion. Ms. Wakey?
Yes, once again, Jane is here talking about gypsy moths. I know, it seems like I'm the go-to person seriously about gypsy moths, and not only because I see them every day, but because, you know, there's more and more evidence that it's not only Luzern County, it's some adjoining counties that have gypsy moth infestation. So everyone received a copy of the map that you also passed out, Mr. Houghton, originally, but now everyone has their own individual color copy of the map as well, and you can see what a problem it is, really, in many locations in Luzern County. So I was interested to, you know, even gather more information when Mr. Hargraves and I started chatting, and I've received many telephone calls, and many emails, and many text messages, many, many messages altogether about gypsy moths all over Luzern County. And I was surprised, and I did not have an opportunity to verify this, but I think I did mention probably to Mr. Pedry that there are adjoining counties that have committed to spraying, and Mr. Pedry, I'm wondering, have you been able to confirm that at all?
Yeah, I'm gonna bring up a tiny special guest, Mr. O'Neill, for another repeat performance.
Oh, good.
He's, he's the go-to for tonight's meeting. We spent some time on the gypsy moths. There have been a lot of misconceptions out there about what counties are doing, what counties aren't doing, what the state, what the state funding is, what the state funding is not. I would say that the state has cut their funding drastically in the past couple of years, and the state program that the county decided not to go with, we decided not to go with that after less than sixty-four other counties decided not to go with it. Mr. O'Neill will go through his decision to go forward with that. With that being said, obviously, gypsy moths are an issue that occur in the county. This council does fund black fly spray through the Act 13 Marcelo Shale Grant, and we're going to talk about any options that this council will have to allocate funds in order to do something, but I'll turn it over to Mr. O'Neill.
I did do research on this several times since I've been here, probably shortly after arriving here at the county. It was a major issue. We had participated in the state program the year before, but it was at a cost to the residents. I did speak to the financial director of the program earlier today, as well as the regional director for the program, the Northeast Region, Scott Stitzer. So I spoke to both those individuals as recently as today about the program, and the bottom line is, funding is being cut for this year after year. At one time, there was state funding to subsidize the program. Right now, the only thing that the state pays for is their own property state parks throughout the state. They do not subsidize it for the counties or its residents at all. That was eliminated years ago. The federal funding has continued to diminish. This year, I believe, they had requested about a half a million dollars for the program. He said he received somewhere in the area of $160,000. That was the pot of money that came down from the federal government. There are three counties that participated in the program, opted in last year about this time, and are actually participating in actual spraying for 2018, which is currently going on, and that would be Lackawanna, Northampton, and Lehigh. Lackawanna and, Lackawanna and Northampton did actually pay for the spraying for their county properties, and they also paid in full for their residents for the spraying. I think a large part of that was because of the small areas and pockets that they have, and the small number of requests that they had submitted through the program. Lehigh County only did one of their parks, that was it. They did not extend the program to the residents. So out of the sixty-seven counties, as Mr. Pedry had mentioned, there are three counties that opted into the state program. The reason being is that it really is not the most effective way to deal with the problem on a county-wide level, contrary to what some people may consider to be an assistance to the residents. It truly is not. And after speaking with the financial director today who runs the program, he has seminars hosted in different areas throughout the state where they actually bring people in and explain this to residents, county officials, local officials, and explain to them that it is much more feasible and cost-effective for the residents to do the spraying on their own privately. So, you know, one of the biggest complaints and one of the biggest requests that I've gotten since I've been here in our office, and our office was the one that oversaw the program in years past, was that the county sprays. The county does not spray. That was not the case. We had a county coordinator assigned to the state program, which was funded by the federal government, okay? The U.S. Department of Agriculture, Department of Forestry is where the funding comes from. The state simply administers the program, and again, does not subsidize it in any way, shape, or form at this point. The estimate for the cost for spraying each year to residents is an estimate that is generally given about the July, August, September timeframe. Those actual costs are not known until the following spring, when the contracts are executed with the state, the program is bid out. There's a lot of requirements and contingencies with the state program, restrictions that you have to meet that are really difficult, a lot of hoops to jump through, so to speak, as far as minimum areas. Right now, there's a minimum required area to spray of twenty-three acres. That's going to be going up to fifty acres next year, I was told. So again, I was told directly from the people who run the program at the state that they are encouraging residents to do it on their own for some of those reasons. I'm sorry, getting back to the cost, the estimated cost this year was about $52 an acre. That was given in the fall of last year. When the pot of money was determined in the spring this year, and they saw how much they had, and they took the request that had been submitted last summer, it did bring the cost down per acre to about $27, but that was because of the very small number of people that participated in the program. The average cost to spray privately, it depends on the area, and it varies, but could be anywhere from $25 to $38, typically in that range.
So, Ms. Wakey, the county of Luzern is the second-largest county in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, eight-hundred-and-ninety square miles. There are six-hundred-and-forty acres per square mile from my Google search, which I just did. And, you know, I just did the quick math on it. If we're using $30 as, $30 an acre, that makes 569,600 acres in the county of Luzern. Thirty acres would be $17 million, eighty-eight, and eighty-eight dollars. Now, that being said, if we're going to do something like this, I don't think we have to spray the entire county. Looking at the cities would be opting out. I think the more areas, we'd have the larger tree areas, like White Township, Rice Township, areas in the Back Mountain, I think some of those areas, Shikshini down that way, I think some of those would be the areas that we would be focusing on as well. It is, I'm using $30 an acre, and we do have a large area in order to do it. The question is, how do we fund something like this? But I'm happy that you did bring this up, because we have to clear up the misconception that the county stopped spraying. That's not true. The county was a facilitator of the state program. In addition, the individual who ran the state program for us was a county engineer.
It was one of our county engineers at the time.
And she was making, I think it was in her $40,000, about eighty percent of her time was used to facilitate this program.
She went out and counted egg masses.
Correct.
I remember that.
She did, she did very little other than this particular program. So we had a county engineer working on, eighty percent of her time on this particular project as well. Nothing's not a worthwhile project, this is a situation that we had. In addition, those costs were still going on to the citizens in order to opt into the, in order to opt into the thing. So it came, Austin, the sixty-four other counties made the decision, it looks like a private area would maybe have a better opportunity to do the spraying. Now, if county council would say, hey, listen, Dave, I wanted, I would like to bring back gypsy moth spraying, something along those lines, do a cost analysis as to what we can do, okay, I'd be happy to break that down and see what we can do from Act 13 Marcelo Shale money. I don't know how far we can get. We are looking at 569,000 acres in the county of Luzern.
I think at this point, we have to explore all options, you know, and I don't think, I certainly don't know what the best solution is, but I think at this point, we just can't keep pushing or kicking the can down the forest, down the road, saying, oh, well, maybe it won't be so bad next year. Because unfortunately, now, this is the third year, I see them already, you know, this is, they, the little, the darn things have hatched, and they're, I see them everywhere already. And with the gentleman, we're talking about the trees that have been destroyed. I mean, it's a hazard, it's a safety hazard. It's, tree limbs are falling, dead limbs, dead branches are falling on the roads, they're falling everywhere in the neighborhoods. So I think, you know, we've got to get serious, and I'm glad, I'm glad we have a meeting in the minds here about this, or at least I think we do. Mr. O'Neill, what were you going to say? I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you didn't interrupt me. I mean, I honestly, I provided a report to Mr. Pedry last year when this, when this subject came up, and if I, if I thought that we were benefiting the residents of this county by participating in this program, I would certainly encourage us to do that. But I do not believe the benefit is there. I believe it's putting more restrictions on people that can get their land sprayed. There are much fewer restrictions when you go with private sprayers. And the cost to the residents, based on what we had sought reimbursement for during the last spraying, I believe it was somewhere in the area of $28 to $30 an acre. That's a fee that you should be able to very easily obtain as a group and be able to do a more comprehensive area. For example, one of the things that was mentioned to me today was that with the state's program, if you happen to be a landowner, and let's just hypothetically say you have fifty, a hundred acres of land, they will only spray a block of a thousand by a thousand, fifty, five-hundred feet in each direction from your home, from the residence. You cannot get the rest of your property sprayed in this program. They will not, they will not do it. They do, they use, they use actually a helicopter to administer the program, which is one means of doing, and it's more like a drop spray type application, where if you go privately, you can have a fixed wing application, which is, which uses obviously other forms of aircraft that would just simply cover an entire area. Also, there's applications from the ground, which are very effective, that this program does not offer.
But they're unfortunately extremely expensive. The ground, as far as I can tell, I've done a little bit of research, not, probably you've done more than I have, that appears to be the most expensive way to go. I think part of the, part of the problem we encountered in our neighborhood, because our neighbors banded together last year and hired a contractor to come in and spray our entire neighborhood, but what was important was, there was a certain percentage of the neighbors who had to agree to it. I don't, it was a very high percentage, and if they did not, the company refused to come in and spray.
That same restriction applies to the state program. They will not, they will not spray less than a twenty-three-acre block area. So if you don't get the participation of the neighbors, the same restriction, and that block, that minimum block size is going to go up to fifty acres next year.
I understood.
Well, this is kind of new to me, I mean, this whole program. When you say it would be cheaper for the residents to do it privately, are you saying, like, and I don't want to sound ignorant, but is it like, say you have a landscaper or a gardener, can you ask them to do something for gypsy moths? Say you don't have that many trees in your area, in your own particular...
Well, I think there are methods that residents use to deal with this, to come at the situation.
I mean, when you're giving this price of residents cost, you know, twenty-eight or thirty, are you talking about individually contracting with your landscaper or gardener?
Well, the last, the last time the county participated in the program, which... Well, the last, the last time the county participated in the program, which was back in 2000, the prices that I've been, we've been discussing are typically aerial spraying, okay? That's the application process. And that's the most common application or combative method. But the prices that I'm referring to, the last time the county participated, we did not subsidize the program, other than providing the coordinator at a cost of probably eight months salary of one of our engineers. That was the county's financial contribution. The cost that we were charged by the state to participate was actually $54 an acre. And then of that $54 an acre, and again, you don't know what that figure is until long after you commit to it. But of that $54 an acre, just before the spraying took place that year, there was a pot of money handed down by the federal government. That pot of money was divided up amongst all the counties and all the residents who opted into the program. Now, if a county opted to pay for the program, that did not include that particular county. And I don't have all those statistics from three years ago. But I can say that Luzerne County did not subsidize that per acre fee. The $54 was charged to the county, there was a pot of money that was divided up, and that came to probably somewhere in the area of 20 to 24 to $25 an acre, that the federal government was able to subsidize that fee. And then the remainder was billed out to the residents. So, if you participated in the program, not only did you have a long list of criteria to meet, and your property had a long list of criteria, you can't just say, I want my property sprayed, it was not that simple. You had to abide by the program guidelines, which were very stringent, but also, if you did meet the criteria and qualifications, you had to be willing to pay a per acre cost to have it done. The county was not subsidizing that.
And you're saying the state is doing, like our state parks, they're just leaving them?
No, the state parks are being done. The state is doing their properties. That's correct. That's all, that's the only thing that the state, the Commonwealth is paying for right now, is to do state property, game lands and parks.
Okay, it was like 9,000, 10,000 acres of game lands and mountainous.
Yeah, but that's the only thing, they are not subsidizing the program to the counties or its residents at all. At one time, they did.
Mr. Haas?
For good reason, I think a big chunk of that criteria was the ability to count the egg masses. I think from what I remember, you might know more than I would.
That was...
And I thought some Penn State Extension members did that, and maybe our Northeast Gardeners Club, I thought they were instrumental in that too. And I'm looking at the map the gentleman provided here. Also, it looks like, Mountaintop looks covered here, and this is just the survey sites that were done. I see down South River, it looks like Salem Township, you know, Newport Township that way. I don't see many Back Mountain or Northwest Corner of this, at least according to this map, that even counted the egg masses. So, a couple of questions. One, if we have more hands on the ground counting egg masses, would, if we were to pursue that, I know you said it's inefficient, but if we have more people applying for this, wouldn't that mean we would have more money available from the federal grants?
No.
Not at all?
No.
Even though it's to buy it up, it's just to buy it up amongst...
There's a pot of money they get for the state of Pennsylvania. And however many applicants they have, they divide that up.
Like county applicants, you're saying, or...
Residents, correct.
Okay. And secondly, maybe...
So, for example, just as an example, the cost of, that came down to approximately $26 an acre this year, would have been higher had we participated in the program. Because that pot of money, which was about $160,000, would have been divided amongst a whole larger population.
Okay, two years ago, when the county was participating, I think it was two years ago, when the young lady came out from the engineering, engineer's office and counted, we opted into it, and then we got a bill, we have two and a half acres, our bill would have been $1,200 an acre. Seriously, $1,200 an acre. And then, well, we certainly weren't going to pay $1,200 an acre. And then shortly after that, about maybe a month or so later, we received another letter saying, well, never mind, because not everyone in your neighborhood is willing to sign on to this, so all bets are off. Good luck. Well, they didn't say good luck, but I felt like it was a good luck and, you know, see what you can do. So, that's when the neighborhood mobilized, and we became foot soldiers, just like the Hargraves have and Mr. Houghton. And so, now we've gotten to the point where our citizens have to become agents of the community and go door to door. It takes an awful lot of time to do that. I know I did it, I know you've been doing it. It takes, it's almost like a full-time job. And then you have to become salesmen convincing people about why it's a good idea to do this. I'm just wondering if there's a better way, or if the county can at least be a resource for this to help, if this has to be done, to get organized in some way, so that a more efficient way, we can achieve the goals in a more efficient way.
Well, for example, going with a private sprayer, you don't need to verify egg masses.
No, I know that.
As long as you have a spray area, you get it sprayed.
Right, I'm not talking about verifying masses.
Well, this is one of the things that makes it much more time consuming to go with it.
Right. No, what the time consuming part is actually going and knocking on a neighbor's door multiple times, until you get a person saying, yes, I'm willing to go along with this, yes, I'm willing to pay the fee. That's what takes the time. It's very time consuming, believe me. I've done it, and these gentlemen have done it as well.
Yeah, we've done it in my neighborhood as well.
Right, there you go, there you go. So, I'm just wondering, do we have any resources at all we could employ, if not financial...
I did ask that question, and at this point in time, there's not really any simpler method. I mean, based on needing a required minimum spray area, there's not really an easier way to do it.
Okay.
I think what we do have available, Jane, we talked in the, in the Act 13 Committee we just had, we have $800 about left in the Marcellus Fund from this past year. Could be some seed money, we can consider that. But I'm looking here, and I, too, how can we, this is pervasive across our county, have, gentlemen, have you taken a look at Mountain Council of Government by any chance? Have you talked to them? I mean, and maybe South County?
We have, we have had communication with them yet. That's like the next step we want to get to. We had spoken about having representatives of each development in our area come and so forth. Because as she said, it's not just one time, hi, how you doing? It's repeatedly that they have gone over and over and over again. So, if we can get more people involved on a larger scale with a shorter amount of time, that's the key to it. The other thing you have to take into consideration is that the timeframe to work on this project is now for next year, because there's a two-week window, I understand, that is constantly moving, and it's going to be coming back around. And I can do everything, I can make more work, I can make more money, more bills, but I can't make more time. So, yeah, I agree with that, and that's why we're here. We're looking for help from you guys as county government to give us maybe some resources, or at least, you know, request that initially, to see if there's something, it's not monetary, more monetary, some ideas. Again, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel, but yes, that is one of the...
And that's what I was thinking, I think what we do have, the resource, we do have time, and perhaps, you know, I see this just like the Blighed Property Committee. We formed that, people devote a lot of time, it's not terribly much money whatsoever, but they came together, we saw an issue, we can take a bite of the apple. Maybe if we could have perhaps an ad hoc committee, maybe have two council members...
I talked to Ms. Wiegis at recess, and I asked her to maybe talk with those gentlemen, because they seem to have a lot of information, and, you know, get Mr. O'Neil involved, because he's done a lot of work. Maybe they could come back with, to us with some kind of plan or solution, I don't know what the proper word might be, that they could offer, that we could maybe work with in the county.
Do we have to formalize that, or can we just have a...
No, I don't think we have to formalize it, first of all, when it works, it's...
Right, but...
I think Ms. Wiegis would be more than willing to spearhead that.
Can we...
Because obviously, she has two gentlemen from her area there that are here looking for that kind of help. And I think Ms. O'Neil has some expertise that could help us.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You're talking about money for next year, right? Not this year?
Yes, yes.
So, if we can maybe put off grant, giving grant money out this year for Marcella Shale and use that money instead for this gypsy moth, because if they eat the leaves off the trees, what, two years in a row, the trees are basically...
One year, four.
Four?
Yeah, it's at least three years, I know that.
How much do we give away?
We don't know until July, when we get them...
Probably until June, we won't know what the number are going to be.
This past year, we had about $60, $60 some thousand dollars left after the other disbursements.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah.
Some of the findings that I have differ from what we've heard here. We've never come close to a $25 or $30 an acre spray. The cheapest I could come up with is $35 an acre to do an entire acre, and that's using a bacteria that's called Mimic, which is non-organic, okay?
Okay.
To do the organic stuff, which is what you really have to do when you have houses involved and pools and things like that, there's something called BT, which is a, it's a tetracyticide, it's a bacterial pesticide, yeah, okay.
Whatever you told me.
Right? Anyway, that's like $50 an acre, that's the best number I could come up with. So, and I've talked to, I've talked to two of the three flight companies around. The other problem you have is one flight company, Tom and Flight, they do airplanes, and they're very good at doing big things.
Yeah, large flights.
They can't, they can't come in, they have difficulties coming into that, sort of spread on that. We've contracted with FFF Flying out of them, and like I said, the best I could do on an acre is $50. What they're doing is they're doing individual billing to homes, and it's costing you $70 a home.
Exactly.
So, we're getting like a third of an acre for $70, $75 of tax. State sales tax pops in on that.
About 6%.
So, the findings that you're hearing from this guy from the state are very different than what I experienced and what I've found out there. And, you know, I've got a background in finances, I've been there seven years as a director of finance for Bunnell, the state of Biscayne. So, I've done a budget or two, and I understand the stuff, and I, you know, I've negotiated with them, I found the whole thing. So, I don't know where they're getting their numbers from as a private entity, but I couldn't get anywhere close to that. And I've talked to two of the three big guys and worked with them that are out there.
Well, I think the best thing to do is have Ms. Wiegis work with you, because you guys have the information, get Mr. O'Neil involved, so he can give you the contact information, provide somebody his...
You know, I'd also like, oh, sorry.
The other thing I would reinforce is the concept of neighborhoods coming together versus saying, we're saying, here's our problem, and we're going to do it, and we have to do it. And like it or not, it's going to happen. That's the only way we're going to solve this thing. That's the only way we're going to get after it. I mean, look on that map.
Well, I think what you talked about, I think you referenced Michigan, or something like that. I think that might be an avenue that we could pursue, but we wouldn't have that more of that information to know how they structured the program.
They've got a beautiful website and all the other stuff.
Good, we'll talk.
I think with the state issue too, that you talk about, we spray for black fly, and we don't have anybody, nobody can opt out of that, that's a nuisance. This is not just nuisance, destruction, it's destruction of property. Your trees are your property. So, there's an economic cost as well as, there's a quality of life issue, and I don't know why the state wouldn't see that the same way. But again, that's out of our hands.
Two other points. I've spent thousands of dollars trying to spray from the ground up, and it hasn't worked. So, I know, I know some people have had good results with that. I literally spent thousands of dollars out of my own pocket in my yard, and I cut down 20 trees after, after all of a sudden. So, we'll kind of go from there.
If we're going to, if we're going to do this committee kind of thing, I would encourage municipalities to sit down with us as well.
Yes.
Well, you have a gentleman...
Yeah, the only, the only way we're going to be able to do this is with municipal support, whether that be monetary or not monetary. I think if we can come together as a group from municipal level to the county level, if the state's not going to do it, maybe it's going to fall on the lower levels of government to handle this. I think maybe we could do some things together.
The Mountaintop Council of Government?
Yes, we do, and I'm also a member...
So, that would be a good group maybe to work with.
Yeah, we have a good group together, and we're well, just looking at a positive effort to encompass other COGs in the upper area, actually Hazelton area and the Back Mountain area as well.
So, Ms. Wiegis will take that on, we appreciate it, and your gentleman would work with her, and you have that connection with the council of governments, so that would all be good. And hopefully, you'll come back with some information that, you know, we can use to help you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, we accept the help. Thank you, thanks, Mr. O'Neil.
Mr. Haas?
Very good. So, this regards a potential discussion about homesteading back $5 from the vehicle fee. And I brought this up at a prior meeting, and I wish we could have talked more about it at that point. But the gist of this is, and I understand colleagues here who voted for the fee, and I know it's unpopular, anytime you raise a tax, you raise a fee. If we could continue to think about how we can wean ourselves away from the property tax and spread out the burden, like we talked about, that 84%, 84% of how we fund county government comes from property tax. And if you look at property value at about $100,000, and it's like $700 or something like that as the tax. So, if we can homestead back $5, that's moving close to just 1% that we're moving away from property tax funding, the county services, it would be 83%. And I know it's a heavy lift. What I would propose, that I, and I would have liked to see this accompany the ordinance that we passed, but if we could homestead back the $5, even in the next budgetary year in 2019, and I only say, hold off for the year because I think it would be a lot of paperwork, but I can hear feedback from the administration about that, if we were to mail out letters and say, hey, you've, you're eligible for $5 reimbursement for this calendar year, even though the ordinance states that we'll be starting to collect that within 90 days, that we'll start...
Well, actually, it's 90 days, the state requested that we notify them, but it begins the first of the month following that, so it'll probably be in the September.
September 1st.
Okay, so September 1st, so it's a third of this calendar year. And again, I think the proposal would seem like it would be a heavy lift to follow through on it this year, and I'd like to see administrative costs, but I think Ms. Wiegis said there's 177,000 taxable entities in our county, but to homestead that back, you're just talking about primary residences, it's got to be significantly less. So, I still think it would not be, if we're getting $5 match from the state, and it's estimated at $1.4 million, okay, that's great, that's money that we get, we can use to our own devices. Why don't we refund those folks back there, that $5 through the homestead, who it's going to help out people that desperately need it, or that could benefit from it most, the primary homeowner? And we still get the money from the state. So, to me, it seems like an even wash, that yes, why pass that, that, I know it's a small burden, it's $5, it's just, it's a small burden, it's a small price to pay, but in the grand scheme of things, we're moving in that direction to wean ourselves off the property tax. We're reimbursing at least a portion of that for folks that have vehicles at home, and we still get the match from the state. And I want to know if we can consider that. I appreciate Ms. Craig, I sent a draft ordinance, and she wrote one back to me, that obviously, $5, we'd have to factor in the millage rate to change that up, and that it says here, if we were to issue this in February of 2019, notice must begin with the public at least 75 days prior to the March 1st application deadline set by law. And so, it looks like, you said here, Ms. Craig, January 6, 2019 at the latest. But I'm just thinking, if we send out the tax duplicates, we can include that in the duplicate and save the printing and the mailing fees on this, so we could do it efficiently. And what I call the homestead, with the way the state statute goes, you can't have a homestead if there is a tax increase. So, and I, thanks Ms. Craig for validating that too. So, I just want to put out there for discussion, we think about that, and to consider that. Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, Ken.
Eric, I have a question.
Yeah, sorry.
And originally, I wasn't for that tax when it was along. When the state matched that, I can't turn my head, that work has to be done to those bridges and roads. I mean, we have people coming here with the Division Street Bridge, Chase Road, another road that's in total disrepair, people from Butler that have been calling me, roads that are disrepair. We just can't keep kicking the bucket down the road. Basically, what you're saying, instead of putting $2.8 million into the roads, and we have plans for Mr. Urban's $2.7 million, work has to get done here. I think we're proving what we've done with the rotunda here, the parking lot, the update of this place. As Mr. Scheiner said, I don't think people are going to complain, once you have a plan, this is Once you have a plan, this is where your money's going. I think that's the bottom line. People want to see results, they just don't want to keep. The popular vote was to vote no, the responsible vote was to vote yes. Because work has to be done. Anybody could vote no, and you just keep kicking the bucket down the road. On, on a household level, if your roof is leaking, you have two options. Either you saved your money or you've got to go to the bank. Here, there were people that were in awe, I'm not raising taxes because I'm not going to get elected. There is a responsibility at times where you do have to raise taxes and be honest with the people. This is what that's for. I mean, in the city of Hazleton, last year, there's four snowplows broke. Nineteen eighty-six, nineteen eighty-six, nineteen eighty-seven, nineteen ninety. Do you know what that is? That's kicking the can down the road. I'm not raising, I'm not getting reelected. I mean, I'll tell the people right now, I'll stay by that. You don't want to use your conscience, but I'm not going to leave Luzerne County in disrepair.
But I'd say with all due respect, I made those tough decisions too. It's not fun. And I, like I said, I appreciate what the majority has done. But what, what we see here, PennDOT never got us the data about where the, the gas money's being sent. I never saw.
They sent you the link.
They sent me the link.
Yes, they did. So if you opened up the link, it was all there.
I did not see that, so thank you, Mr. Chair. Secondly, there, there are other ways that when we look at, at federal partnerships, we have this omnibus bill that has gone through this year that said that there's a big component of infrastructure in that. I think we need to shake that down as well as looking at designating some of these main thoroughfares, K routes, that are, are emergency and essential roads and highways. You're absolutely right. I mean, you look at Chase Road out in Jackson Township, that is the road you cross to get from West Annacoke anywhere out to the back mountain. That, then that's a disaster. I was just out there a couple of days ago. I understand, I'm not kicking the can down. But as always with, with government, there are also efficient ways and other ways we can look at without punishing people for this. This just sticks in the craw a lot of people. And we can absorb that cost.
Punishing, I'm not the kind of, I think it's responsible.
Maybe my terminology is a little strong there.
Before I gave five dollars back, I give it to the gypsy box.
Yeah, well, absolutely. There's needs out there too. But again, if, if we're getting the money for the bridge, we're getting one point four million dollars, that's what, what the, the.
Projection.
Thank you. That, that's what they, they said it would be. All right, why do we take it off the people? Why don't we pony up there at the county level? The government can give that one, one point four. It's still a wash. We're still having the money to, to fix the roads, even though it's only going to be one road or one bridge with that. And I see the value in that, but at the same time, there's many ways to skin a cat. And I think we need to shake all the, the fruit out of the tree before we.
There's more than.
But I'm just saying.
Say, rounding off, we have five million dollars to do work. There's much more work than five million dollars that is desperately needed right now. I mean, your son was here, he said that didn't even touch the base. You're probably looking at five hundred million dollars if you want to fix the roads properly. So, what are you doing with five million? We, we got to start moving here. Harry, we couldn't.
But see, this is the discussion I wish we had had two and four weeks ago, which I didn't think it was, it was vetted well enough. But.
Well, it wasn't vetted well enough.
Just the discussion about this.
About what?
Well, I wanted to include this as an amendment and it wasn't addressed.
It was voted down, wasn't it?
No, we didn't take a vote on that, on the five dollar fee.
On the five dollar fee?
We didn't take a vote on that.
On the homestead.
On the homestead.
I'm thinking about, I thought that we voted, no.
No.
No, you couldn't, you had to be a separate.
No.
A separate ordinance, you couldn't include two topics in one ordinance. So it had to be a separate ordinance.
And what's, and that's why I would, I, I don't want to dig up, I know it's because it's a painful issue. I don't want, I don't want to do that, it's not my intention here. But if, I wish we could have done it at that point to perhaps include it, maybe could have gotten more buy-in.
Well, I think if you would have brought it up prior to that evening, you would have had that opportunity.
I, I think I did.
No, you didn't.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Urban?
Yeah, just a couple, a couple of things. Again, I, I just want to reiterate, in this plan that we have here on page one oh one in the back, there is no Marcella Shale.
Are you looking at the capital plan?
Yeah, no, no Marcella Shale money that's been allocated for any of these projects. You've got money from Act forty-four, you've got Act eighty-nine, you've got liquid fuels money, you've got community development money. That's the money that's been allocated. That two point seven that's been sitting in the account for years has not been used. So people have been riding around over rickety bridges because there's no plan in place to allocate any of that money to fix any rickety bridges. And so that's why I voted, not to give you any more money because you haven't spent what you got. You don't need to take more from the people because you're already sitting on two point seven million that you haven't done anything with. The money might be going down, but you're just stockpiling what you got. Number two, there was a vote last year in December to reduce the millage because we had supposedly a surplus in money. And I think one of those votes was to give the people back six cents. It, it failed. I mean, there were three separate votes to give people money back and all those votes failed. And Harry, I think you voted against all of them. You did. So I mean, I don't, I don't see any need to put five dollars back in. There was also, we, we were giving people fifty-two dollars back in homestead. And there was, there was an agreement that that fifty-two dollars would go for three years and then it would be sunsetted and the people would get it back. Well, come three years, they, they took it off of them and they never gave it back to them. So the people never got the fifty-two back because the way this council voted, the majority voted. So, so I mean, try to put five back in, to me, is not relevant at this point in time. Resending this, this five dollar fee because you've, you haven't spent two point seven million that you have sitting in, in a bank account for years. Shame on this council for, for not pushing to spend it.
Well, again, if you look at, we keep on coming back to this at the council and those of us who, the longer you serve on this council, you realize the amount of vast amounts of unfunded state mandates we have. Most recently, we're going to have to get no voting machines as a directive. Where are we going to find that money? That's a directive from on high. And again, when we look at this, the state gives us very few options to raise revenue apart from the property tax. So to me, yeah, it's five dollars, it's five bucks, but it's moving us, it's inching us in that direction. And unfortunately, that's what we're going to see when we improve, we're going to see incremental improvements. And it, it seems like from the PennDOT official that was here, said it's only going to be a one-year, five dollar fee anyway. Nonetheless, one-year guarantee.
And it's not state money anyway, it's federal money that is going to take away from other federal programs. He's just going to take federal dollars and allocate it to this program for one year. I mean, so he's not giving anything from the state coffers, he's taking it from the federal government, which would end up on, on some other project anyway. So, he's just diverting money for a year, so.
And that's, that's the big discussion. This is just a really small microcosm of the big issue here.
The real issue is to get on the governor and the state legislators and tell them you're not going to vote for them until they fix this problem. I'm not going to vote for any of them until this problem is fixed. None of them. You know, Governor Wolf ran commercials critical of, of COVID about the thirty cent gas tax. And, and he hasn't done anything to give us any money. Hasn't done anything to give us any money here at the county. And he needs to step up to the plate. You know, there's so damn many holes out in the road. I mean, you, you gotta, you gotta swerve back and forth to the point where a cop will pull you over and say, why are you weaving? I'm saying, I'm weaving to miss the buttholes. That's all.
I agree with Mr. Urban, that's where our fight is, at the state level.
Yeah, totally, not vote for them.
But I, but I also think that Mr. Urban has said we have, what, two point seven?
Two seven, two point seven.
So, two point seven, we know how much it costs to fix a road or a bridge.
Yeah.
Two point seven plus another two point something. I mean, the, that money has to be used and so does the five dollars with the five dollars reimbursement. I think that that's a no-brainer for the people. Maybe people didn't like it, the idea, because we were talking about county roads versus the township roads. We have this other money though, as well. So we do need a plan. But I don't think sending the five dollars back to the people, I mean, what a nightmare. I mean, a lot of the people that called me and complained were people that owned three and four cars. So they're going to get five dollars back over the fifteen or twenty they were concerned about. I don't think that's going to make a difference to them, Harry.
Yeah. I'm not saying it makes different, you're right, five dollars is not going to make a huge amount of difference. But it's showing the people, we're incrementally ratcheting back all the, the costs that we've put on them over the years. Eighty-four percent of our revenue comes from property tax. It spreads out the pain, at least for one year. One less percent that we're getting back. And, you know, I don't, I don't know if, if management can say, how feasible would something like this be in, in next year's budget? If we can consider that and.
Taking out five dollars from everybody's tax bill?
Yeah, I mean, I know it's like a fraction of a, of a mill.
I mean, maybe, Mr. Swett will take that? I, I would say with regards to that, that, that two point seven million dollars, I misspoke, Mr. Urban, it's, it's not in that budget. But I'm going to get an answer for you because we're going to spend that. Mr. Griffith was here earlier, he says, I, I spent way too much money and then Mr. Urban told me, I'm not spending enough money, so I'm having some issues. But.
You're not spending enough money, I'm just saying you haven't spent this money.
Believe me, Mr. Urban, guess what?
It's sitting there.
Guess what's on my to-do list? Spend that money. You have nothing to worry about there, sir. Mr. Swett?
Swett?
Sure. Really quickly, there's a lot of moving parts. They've got the, obviously you need to know the assessed, assessed value. So just the county, we know that changes every year. We get that from the Assessment Department in September when we do the budget hearing. You need to know what the management's proposed millage rate is. Then you need to wait until after December because as before, council can change any proposed millage change. So I think you can put this, get this information together. I also think you then need to know how many are primary residents versus, you know, regular residences. So it's not just.
And commercial properties.
Right, it's not just a one-to-one, it's not that it's not doable. And I also think you need to have everything ready for that short window that Shannon talked about, from when council passes a budget on or around December fifteenth, to then get everything ready and out the door in about a month. And you'd have to have all that information in front of you. And then also, if you're going to do it by, I believe by ordinance, by Shannon, you said it had to be by a percentage, a reduction? Couldn't be a dollar amount, it had to be a percentage?
It's, it, no, it could be a fixed dollar amount, but I mean, you have to factor in, you can't just say, take five bucks off somebody's assessed value because then that doesn't translate.
Right. And if you do a percentage, then it's going to be different, you know, based on somebody's assessed value. So it's a great idea and there's a lot of variables, so.
So it is feasible.
We can get all the information together, I don't think now's the time to get the information.
I don't think it's a great idea, I think it's confusing. Some people don't have cars, so they're going to get a five dollar reimbursement. Some people have six cars, as a friend of mine has. He said, Gene, put them, put the frigging fee on there, he said, because we need to get some roads fixed. We're going to, we're not going to fix all the roads that we have here, but let's go move forward somewhere. And then if the, if we rescind the five dollar fee, then what happens when the state is only guaranteeing a year? We've rescinded that fee for five dollars and the state drops the five dollars, or the one point eight four million they're reimbursing us. And we, we, we've lost that revenue that is revenue to help the taxpayers. So I think that whole thing is, Harry, I, just so people know, if they don't want to vote for me, that doesn't bother me. I won't, I won't vote for that. I won't support that.
And I'm saying, the, the council over the past six years has made some very difficult decisions. We've shrunk the debt down by twenty-five percent or so. And we've made some tough calls. And thanks to Mr. Pedri's leadership and the staff, we've, we've trimmed up a lot of things. There's a lot more, more ways to go. But again, I just think we need to keep on, on seeking out those ways that we can take the burden off the vehicle owner, off the property tax owner, off the property owner, whatever we can do.
And I think everybody's in agreement with that.
Absolutely.
I mean, nobody wants to raise taxes.
Of course, of course not.
But again, there's sometimes, there is a, a responsibility to do it. Raise taxes or that five dollar fee, whatever. I mean, nobody wants to do it. This fee does not hit the property owner. It hits people whether they're property owners or not.
That's correct. So, and I agree with you saying, so if you're a property owner, some people that don't have vehicles, you may have some very elderly people that don't have it, they're going to get an extra five dollars. Again, it's, it's not a lot of money, but it brings us in that direction, which is what I think we're all tasked to do at the county government.
I see where, I really see your frustration, I see where you're coming from, I think we're all frustrated.
Yeah.
I know I am. I don't like to, I didn't, I wasn't thrilled about adding, you know, a five dollar burden. But as I've said before, people have approached me and said, do something, please. And they're very frustrated. You know, they're very frustrated, especially with the roads. And they're very frustrated with the cost of, of fuel, gas, rising very mu, I've heard in some places, in New York, it's like five dollars a gallon. Now, come on. You think we have problems? How would you like to live in, in New York and have to face the taxpayers there? Someone's going to have to pay for that five dollar, uh, uh, fee. So people have been given some, I get, I understand there's been some breaks in the economy and people are seeing a little bit more money in their paycheck. What good is it with the cost of gas rising the way it is? What good is it? It's not doing much good. And I, and I understand your frustration. However, we're not getting any leadership from Harrisburg and we're not, certainly not getting any leadership from Washington. I'm, I'm still waiting for all of this grand infrastructure plan that's supposed to happen all over the United States of America. I'm not seeing it. So we have to be the grownups here in this county. And we have to do something for our people because, Lord, nobody else is helping us.
And you're right, upstate New York is drying up because of the immense taxes up there. It really is. And again, just keep in mind, wean ourselves off the property taxes is a, a, a little way we could do a little bit. I understand, it's, I understand.
Harry, we talked, I mean, I'm on the Legislative Commission, Committee with you. We went to Eddie Pachinski and we talked about ideas that there were out there for raising revenue. Because there aren't a lot of hot pots out there to raise revenues in. But he gave us a couple of ideas. But I don't think.
It's in their.
I still don't think the, the five dollars is, is going to do anything.
I understand.
And, and I think we, we have to start looking at the way that there, that some of our legislators, and you asked them to band together and we still need a meeting, are going to act towards coming up with some of the same ideas or joining together in the same ideas to have those pots of money. But, you know, Marcella Shale is one of them.
Well, I think we've had quite a bad discussion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And there'll be some future discussion, I'm sure, so. We'll move on to number nine, Mr. Haas, you made a request there.
Yeah, that'd be, for, for the newcomers here at CCAP, it's the County Commissioner Association Pennsylvania. They, they advocate for counties and they also really help instruct people in county government, elected officials and all kinds of staff members. They've taught me a lot over the past six years of serving on this council. They have an annual conference, this year happens to be in Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, it's from August fifth to the eighth. It's, it's been invaluable. And I, every year I encourage my colleagues to really consider a ten, if you can find the time, three or four days to get out. The early bird registration fee is four hundred and twenty-five dollars, if you, it's four hundred dollars if you register before June thirtieth. And what that is, is just the registration. In the years that I've gone, I've never, I've never taken reimbursements for lodging or, or other, or meals or anything like that. It's just a strictly four hundred dollar registration fee, I find my own lodging, fed myself and learned a lot of lessons. And also had seen a lot of other county commissioners out there that are experiencing the problems we are and their strength in numbers. And I think we, we have benefited a lot. I think most notable success was the nine-one-one funding where the county association came together, lobbied the state legislators to really in, increase that, that phone fee by, by a very small dollar amount or something like that. But now we have fully funded nine-one-one that doesn't come out of our general fund. So, things like that, we, we see there coming out of the County Commissioner Association of Pennsylvania. And I would like to see if the council would be willing to cover the four hundred dollar registration fee at next meeting.
You're going to give us a request in writing so we can add it to the voting session, please?
Sure, absolutely.
Didn't you say it was from August fifth to the eighth?
It's August fifth to the eighth, it's a Sunday to Wednesday. And you received an email today from the County Association, Samantha Neely in your inbox. That's who was evidently tasked with inviting everybody out. So everybody's invited, we have money in the budget, I think we budgeted, I don't know, eight hundred or twelve hundred dollars. For two people, maybe a hundred dollars or so. So, thank you for the consideration.
Reports to the County Council, many authorities, boards and commissioners.
Well, we appointed three people tonight. We have certain authorities, boards and commissions where we need people. Forty-four airport, if anybody knows somebody who flies in or out of there or uses a plane, we need people on that board. Aging, we've put a gentleman on there tonight, but we could put more people on the aging advisory board. Mental health, developmental services, we have five openings there. So if we have anybody that you know of that's interested in.
If I could interrupt briefly, especially younger people.
Yes.
I mean, I, I think anybody of any age would be appreciated, but I'm on that board. And we always talk about, wouldn't it be grand if we had some new members who were younger members as well?
Good idea. And I think if you wouldn't mind, because I know you're not busy, but maybe a letter. going out to the political science departments in Misericordia, Wilkes, and Kings, there might, there might be local residents taking courses there that would wanna get their feet wet in government by serving on an advisory board. If that's possible, please.
Well, it's mental health. They might be able to do well by sending to the psych department.
Psych department?
Maybe we should just send it over to the colleges.
Yes. Thanks for that, I guess.
Okay. Budget, finance, and audit. Obviously, we've met with the audit team. We've had weekly updates. We've received another update again today. We have one issue that we brought up at a work session about a month ago. I asked Mr. Pedri if he would talk in that regard, in its regards to our children and youth agency at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have some very difficult news tonight for, for county council with regard to the 2017 audit. Obviously, a hallmark of what I hope to be my short two years here as county manager is that all of our audits came in on time. The 2012 audit was 10 months late, 2013 audit was nine months late, 2014 audit was three months late, and then the two audits that I was county manager for, 2015 and 2016, came in on time. Unfortunately, I found out today that we're not going to be, finalized, that we're not gonna be on time with, with this particular audit. We will be able to provide to county council before June 30th, a draft audit that encompasses 87% of the, of all county funds. It will include our entire general fund, it will include our pension, it will include all of our departments and agency other than children and youth. Children and youth is a $40 million approximate budget that we are, we are working with. A couple of months ago, it came to administration's attention through our outside auders that the finances inside of children and youth in regards, in regards to preparation for that audit were not up to speed. There were some personnel issues there. Those personnel issues were dealt with quickly, and we moved forward. The county put together a team of outside consultants, internal financial individuals, mandated overtime. We worked weekends. They worked late at night for our fiscal team to, to get us across the line for our June 30th deadline. The children and youth audit, outside auders are Mayor Dussel. They will not be able to get out here until June 18th. That timeline does not provide enough time for our main auders, Clifton Larson Allen, to finalize their particular audit. So on, prior to June 30th, this is something that I personally take very seriously and county administration takes very seriously. Mr. Swett and Ms. Hill and I have had numerous meetings on this. County council has allocated to me in order to make sure that our audit is completed by June 30th of every single year, and that's something I took seriously, and I was proud that I was able to get my two audits in during this time period here. We were on track to do three in a row, and children and youth popped up, and we've dealt with those issues, and now we are now fixing those issues as, as we move forward so we're not in this position again. I, in turn, have taken county council's mandate to hit my June 30th audit number, and I've asked county administration, county budget and finance, the children and youth financial team, everybody's financial team, to make that June 30th deadline. Children and youth financial team came up short, and so we've had to deal with that. We are going to continue to work on this. Prior to June 30th, you will receive a, a draft audit by Clifton Larson Allen that includes our entire audit for our general fund and every other department other than children and youth. All our preliminary numbers show will be a significant savings. The 2016 audit showed over a million dollar surplus. I'm hoping to have similar results in the 2017 audit when we get there. But the final audit, we'll not be able to present to council until the end of August of 2018. We're still before the, the September 30th deadline. We know that the September 30th deadline has been set forth by many municipalities as the, the go-to deadline, but in, and that the June 30th deadline was an aggressive one. We were able to hit it in two years in a row for the first time in home role history, and we're not gonna be able to hit it this year. This is something that we're gonna work on together. We're gonna, we're gonna provide the numbers so that county council has the, more than enough time to review the audit and all the numbers prior to the budget. And I want to thank the budget and finance team and Ms. Hill and her team for truly stepping up and doing what they can during a certain time period here since we were made aware of the situation. I informed county council of this in April. So here's where we stand today. I want to make sure council is aware of this. We will continue to work on this matter, and we will have the draft audit prior to June 30th, and then the final audit will be at the end of August.
Okay. Legislative, Mr. Haas?
Sir, Legislative Committee, we met with Representative Pachinski last Thursday in his office. He was gracious, gracious host, and like she also said, gave us many good ideas. All right. We're looking at the first, actually, the second week in June with potentially meeting with Senator Baker, Representatives Bobek and Koffer, and will continue to do so up until the end of the budget season this year, hopefully meet with our entire delegation and taking a different approach. Our issues, again, that we've been talking about are how to diversify our tax base, how do we find revenue apart from property tax? Where do we find source of revenue to fund county services? Fulfilling state mandates that the state needs to come alongside and equip us to fulfill their mandates. The opioid crisis was a big issue we spoke about, as well as this, in particular, the voting machine mandate, how that's gonna eventually happen. Going forward, we will certainly talk more about gypsy moths as well, and that when we meet with Senator DeChick's office about the Hazeln public, public transportation mess, I put that in my notes as well. Our next committee meeting, on the whole, will be Tuesday, June 12th at 5:00 p.m. here in council chambers. And, you know, essentially, I just gotta leave off with this, you know, I saw the Voice article today about the $2 million to help out, or the $2 million entrance right away at the Henry Center at Wilkes. Again, the state is giving these, these grants in part to fund these operations. We've got capital projects here that we desperately need to. A couple hundred thousand dollars would be very helpful, but time and time again, we don't see stuff like that. So we're gonna continue to beat that drum, and we're gonna continue to do it respectfully with all our delegation here.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Harry, just one, one comment.
Yes.
Last year, when you had all the state reps and their representatives here...
Yes.
One of the things they specifically said is that if you want them to do something, you need to draft the legislation and give it to them. And I think, you know, maybe the legislation with the help of the solicitor, pick out that, that gas tax bill, find out where he shortchanged the counties, and hand them a piece of paper and say, "This is the legislation I'd like you to propose."
Steve, you are right on the mark. That's what I, I took away from our meeting, too.
That's, that's what needs to be done, not, not the talking with them.
You're on the committee.
I know, no, well, the solicitor can draft it.
Yeah.
But get, get the bill, look at the bill, and find out where we've been shortchanged in, because that's what he said he needed. And that's, that's how legislation, they're not gonna sit down and draft. They have lobbyists that do it for them, but we, we don't have lobbyists unless, unless CCAP wants to do it for us.
Well, I was gonna say, unfortunately, you know, we're part-time elected officials without allegiance to staff members, and that's, therein lies the problem, while trying to raise families and live life to them. But, yeah, it's good, it is, it's very good advice, and we'll look into that.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes, the real estate committee meeting will be held June 12th. And at that time, we, our, our main topic will be to discuss what I call the sell list that the manager is, is asking his staff to compile so that we can pour over that list and see if we can make some progress with it, sell the properties, present it to the council with the possibility of getting the okay to sell those properties, advertise, whatever procedure we decide to adopt, so we'd actually get some more money into the county.
Thank you. Ms. Hauck?
Strategic initiatives met at 5:00 p.m. today. We had a very brief, productive meeting. We reviewed the strategic, the goals that we had put together last year, and we discussed adding something about the environment in the, the section on environmental goals because we do, you know, because specifically tonight because of the concern with the gypsy moths, but we felt that it might be a good idea to add another goal into the environmental goals. We also discussed preliminarily high-performing organization objectives, which are used in many governments, county governments, city governments, and ICMA actually does training on, on those kinds of objectives. So we took a preliminary look at it today, and we'll talk about it some more. I expect our next meeting will be July 10th, and maybe the manager can be involved in that. And if you have any information about that from ICMA, maybe you'd like to...
High-performing organizations?
High-performing, yep, high-performing organizations, yep.
July 10th?
July 10th, great. Okay. And then the county code review committee is meeting again on June 5th. We have done pretty much everything on the personnel code. We're waiting for some input from administration regarding just one section of it, but we took, we started to take a look at the ethics code, and that will be the next, the next code that's being reviewed.
And we expect to bring the personal code back to the council. Do we have a...
Well, I don't think we'll be able to do it. We may be able to do it for June 12th, but I think it depends on when administration gets the, you know...
Hopefully, sometime in June, then.
Yep. Oh, in June. It'll be one of those meetings in June. Great.
Act 13, Ms. Haas?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. So tonight, we met at 4:00 p.m. Councilman Wakus and Councilman Vog, myself, a nice, really nice group of people as always. And we are, we looked at the packet from the past couple of years of the process, and thanks to Ms. Lawrence for assembling that, a very sizable piece. We are gonna meet on Tuesday, June 12th at 4:00 p.m., and the goal will be to, to really get a draft process to council for that following meeting in order to begin the process again for the third year in a row in July. We're still continuing to accept any, any ideas from council members, you know, let us know if you'd like to see anything changed, but we want to make sure the process is better than the previous two years, and we're, I think the consensus was, we're gonna, we're gonna certainly keep a lot of it, but we'll make some fine-tunings and get that to you so we can, again, begin an earnest in July.
Harry, yeah, I would make the recommendation to allow municipalities to submit applications for gypsy moth funding.
Oh, absolutely. And, you know, that's, that's certainly on the, in the realm. All right. Currently, we, we've had two groups that have, have said they don't want the funds. That's where the $800, $8,800 comes from, and, and Ms. Lawrence, she's still in dialogue. Some other folks might, might not accept the funding, too. So there might be more, so that might moth grow, that pot might grow. Thank you, sir.
Moving down to the next one. Buy the property?
Me again. Buy property, buy property committee met yesterday at 5:00 p.m. The next meeting will be on July 30th at 5:00. And we're looking at, at preparing a workshop in September for municipalities, just again, so we can help with the application process. Again, not to be presumptuous, because it still has to pass council, of course, but judging by 10 folks here voted to introduce it, you know, we're, we're accepting, expecting that. And again, another just great group of people. I really appreciate the committee there moving forward on that. I think that's all I got for that.
Riverfront Parks, I've been sending the emails that I've been receiving from that committee. The big item on their agenda right now is the River Fest, which is scheduled in June. If you go to their website, they have all the information as far as the schedule of events, who's performing, what activities they'll have, et cetera. They're moving right along. They've recruited a lot of sponsors. They've had a lot of support from two colleges. Our people helped them with the riverfront, and the city also provided some help there, so that was good partnership there. Plains Township Tiff Committee has been no further meeting since the first meeting way back in March, so there's nothing to report there. Ms. Hauck?
Well, the website steering committee met on April 24th. Mr. Pedri probably has more information on it than I do right now because at that meeting that we talked about the fact that the staff was being trained, the county employees were being trained on how to use the website, and there was supposed to be a rollout on May 21st. It's yesterday.
Correct. I'm happy to, I'm not happy to announce that, that the rollout did not occur on May 21st. There's still a lot of work to be done on the website with regard to every single county page that's gonna be up. We're shooting for a date in late June. But all county workers have been trained, and now it's a matter of what the website could really be. We're looking to get away from the incredibly long scrolling and getting to, and getting to more of the picture-oriented, and some other counties have done some really good things. So we're looking at one in June right now, and I'm working with IT on that to get this county website up and running.
Thank you. We're down to public comment?
Excuse me?
Yes.
Before we go into public comment?
Yes.
I meant to bring this up, and it was my, unlighted part, I was bad. But I, I'd like to thank a lot of people concerning the opening of the rotunda. And, I mean, people, this, this is your building, like, this isn't our building. Don't come here just on jury duty. I mean, if you have children, the place is absolutely, this is your place, like, bring your children, whatever you have to do, but it's just a gorgeous place to come. Whatever, you just have to come for weddings, whatever, bring your children, walk around at your building. But I'd like to thank the Wyoming Valley Middle School, the young women and the young men for their performance here. I mean, it, it was just chilling that you had kids here and you have this jewel of a place, and, and an amazing young talent in this Madison Woods, if you ever wanted to hear somebody sing like.
Yeah, she was great.
It was just a great event with these young kids, young men and women participating. That's all I'm gonna say.
Very good commentary, Mrs. Snead. Again, we're down to public comment. Mr. Shiner?
Thank you.
No, thank you. Anyone else? Just one note here, we have, if you looked at your schedule, it was in your packet for the summer, we're gonna be going off-site for several meetings. The last meeting in June, which is June 26th, we're gonna be at the Community College. The last meeting in July, which is July 24th, we're going to the MMA Building out on Route 118 in Dallas, out by the Luzern County Fairgrounds. Mr. Keller? That would be a new site that we have not visited before. August, the last meeting, we're going up to the Pittston Memorial Library, which is a very good site. We were met there once before, worked out very well. And in September, we're going down to Hazel Township Municipal Building, which we've been there before, and that's another good site in September. So the next four months, June, July, and August, we'll be having a meeting off-site. And then in the fall, when we're getting to budget season, we will have another meeting down in the Hazeln area, once we get into the budget process, to have a chance for the southern county residents to meet and go over some of the items in the budget. So please take note of that. The addresses are there. People can look up the directions on Google. We appreciate that. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, one, one, one little comment.
Only a little comment?
Just a little one, yeah. I mean, you, you provided a resolution for people with, with Lyme's disease tonight. You know, it's on the uptick, you know? The tick population is rising in northeastern Pennsylvania and, and out in the Midwest. You know, you just go on the internet and you can see, and this, this is maybe the wisdom that Mr. Williams had that we didn't follow. You know, one way of controlling ticks is to let your chickens, okay, flock, patrol your yard. I mean, they, they're, 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 they eat pests, and one of the things they